You all knew I was being lazy?
As part of that, will you make us small?
This meeting is being recorded.
Well, I'm going to call this meeting of the Addison's and the Tolda here to order today, March 28. And first off, when we do introductions, we can start down at the table here.
Will Hatch, technology director.
Janie Thier.
Peter Rose, superintendent.
Victoria Jettie.
Mary Gal.
Jamie McCallum.
Barbara Wilson.
Joanna Dorian.
Ryan Power, Middlebury.
Mary Heather Neville.
Suzanne Buck.
Peter Conlon.
Steve Orzak.
Caitlin Steele, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Nicole Carter, Director of Equity and Student Services.
Logan Price, Business Manager.
Laura Harpens, parent. Karen DeGueye.
Great, thank you, welcome everyone. As we do at each meeting, now is the moment for public comment. We will look to the public in the room first. If you have a comment, please raise your hand, and then we'll look at our attendees on Zoom. Any public comment in the room? And on Zoom, any public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. All right. Any non- or recommendation to approve the minutes of March 14?
I'm going to approve the minutes of March 14.
Studies and Design. Any questions, comments?
I have one.
So, you got it. Here's these are the only ones.
So, the paragraph that's in section B1 and it's paragraph seven, there's a lot of, there's some questions around potential conflicts of interest. And I was noticing it's sort of out of context. It's not when that was brought up, and it's not attributed to anybody. What is reflected accurately is later on in section, I think it's the superintendent report, and it's paragraph five. It is reflected. So, this idea that it was talked about twice is an emphasis that's probably not very accurate. And I would like to have that paragraph.
Yeah, just to clarify, I agree with that. I think that is a little artifact of minutes being begun by one person and then continued by myself. So, I would agree that we should probably remove the first preference and just keep it in mind of when it happened, kind of along the discussion. That would be my recommendation.
Great, thanks, Pat. Any other questions, comments?
I was just going to make a statement that you don't see consent agenda on here? I take it.
Feedback was really noted. But even though it doesn't say consent agenda, this is something abbreviated. Okay, so with the one correction, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say. Hi, Lindsay.
Hi. Hi, yes.
Excellent. And.
Reviewing the bills as much as the comments before I do it, they've changed the way the accounts payable will be. I don't know, they'll review. And rather than having the health, dental, and other benefits in the payroll, it will end up in the accounts payable. So, for this month, the accounts payable is substantially bigger. I just thought to clarify that, and I did this very grossly when I looked at it. About 115,000 is for student transportation. That doesn't come up every time. About 107,000, almost 108,000 is for the preschool quarter repayments that we pay to the different vendors or different schools across the county or whatever. And about 406,000 was for the VEHI health, and 40,000 for the dental. So, that's what makes up, as Barb reviewed them today, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. That number is substantially higher. It will probably remain higher when we look at it. It's just that it's more reporting in that particular way. So, like I said that one, then there's two payroll numbers. One for $3,460.54, and one for $923,535.92. I move that we pay the bills.
All those in favor?
A little parliamentary thing.
Yes.
So, we started raising our hand voting back in our Zoom days. I would just say that it gets a little confusing as to which one is the actual vote, the voice or the hands?
Yep.
And I would suggest that we just return to voice votes.
So, if you're on Zoom, you raise your Zoom hand to vote. Otherwise, voice vote is not. Report the superintendent.
I've got a few things too, just that aren't on the agenda that I'm going to report, but before I do that, since Karen DeGueye is here as our representative, I would like to move to discussion. The Parks and Rec Committee, Representative.
Okay, just not reserved. Thanks, guys. It's nice to see people's faces in person. I haven't seen most of you in a really long time, so happy to be here with you. The other thing we haven't done in a long time is meet as a Parks and Rec committee. So, it's been quite some time. Our last one was over Zoom. We do have one scheduled for April 13. But I went in and I met with Dustin and Scott to get an update as to where things currently stand and the things that we're going to be talking about at our next meeting. So, if you remember, this fall was the first time under the new structure with sixth grade playing soccer through Mums instead of through Parks and Rec. So, I have some news to kind of report out about that. It was the only one that kind of stayed. So, the sixth graders played rec basketball with the five, six rec. They're going to be playing Little League for softball and baseball and club lacrosse. And then at middle school is seven, or six, seven, and eight were all cross-country and track and field. So, those were not a rec program already. So, soccer's really the only one that was sort of removed from the Parks and Rec program and brought over to Mums. I would say that the feedback was not great for a few reasons. On the Parks and Rec side, the fifth grade only teams played predominantly five, six teams. And coaches reported back that kids were just feeling really demoralized and defeated. And that's a really hard age to feel that way. You really want them sticking with it and getting self-positive experiences so that they go on to keep playing. And then on the sixth grade side, we did hear from parents that there weren't a lot of games because there's not a lot of schools that really had a sixth grade. The games that they did play were often against older kids, and so they kind of had a similar experience that the fifth graders did. So, what Parks and Rec is going to do is make the five, six soccer available again as, you know, sixth graders basically have the option. They can choose to play for Mums, they can choose to play on the rec team, or they could choose both. And they will purposely schedule practices to not overlap. So, it seems like a good compromise. Hopefully, we'll get those athletes some time on the field in one way or another, and that it makes everybody a little bit happier. In soccer, we had 206 players preschool through fifth. That was down some from average years, even without counting the sixth grade. Couple of reasons for that, probably COVID-related in some instances. We had 126 basketball players, K to six, and there were year-round classes for gymnastics, which averaged seven kids a class. So, strong programming still for the school age stuff. The Parks and Rec hosted the Middlebury Basketball Tournament this year after not having it last year. Didn't offer refreshments, had to stay masked. We followed all of the ACSD protocols when it came to COVID requirements and restrictions. And Middlebury had two, ACSD had two boys and two girls teams, and they actually both took first and second, which is really great. Huge accomplishment for those kids. Dustin is looking into possibly being able to offer swimming lessons through the school. And he's looking at working with the PE teachers on how to coordinate this. There would be a small cost associated to pay for instruction. So, that's something just to kind of put on your radar that you may see as a request come through, depending on the interest of the schools. But that's something that, you know, would happen probably end of May, early June. I'm not sure that they're thinking this year because of that coordination that needs to happen, the budgeting and all of that. But it's been something that's on the radar for them for a while that they've wanted to be able to offer. So, that might be a nice thing to be able to offer our schools. Transportation continues to be a challenge for students from Shoreham and Bridgeport, particularly for the after-school practices. They're cognizant of that. They really try to make scheduling those after-school sports a little bit later to allow for parents to get out of work and be able to transport kids in. It's not always possible, especially with gym time being so in demand in the winter. So, they do the best that they can there, but that continues to be an issue. And then finally, we are exploring partnering with other stakeholders in Middlebury on what's called the Better Places Grant. I don't know if you guys have heard of this. The state of Vermont is offering a Better Places grants to different communities and their place-making grants. So, essentially, the idea is funding to create places that people want to be. They wanted to be fairly close to the downtown, but our bike ped folks in town are thinking about things like a pump track and maybe some outdoor recreation enhancements. And they're really looking at Mums as a possible location. So, very early stages in all of this. You will be kept in the loop if it actually progresses past these idea stages. But for now, that is something that a group of folks are looking at. That's it from me. Any questions? Yes?
The swim program for the, all the schools, does it mean every grade, I mean, what grades will actually participate in?
Don't know. I think Dustin has an idea. I'm guessing it's probably that, well, I think he's, he really wants to talk to the phys ed teachers first. So, I think phys ed teachers are going to be the first communication, gauge the interest from there, and then he's going to go up the chain and just see like, is this something that the schools even are looking to be able to do? And what, where do they think the focus should be in terms of age?
Okay, and would it be the entire class?
I hope so, yeah. I don't think, yeah, they wouldn't want to just only certain kids.
Okay.
Because Mary Hogan, they have a swim program.
They did.
Yeah, yeah, well, they, in the summer, yeah.
No.
No, they burned the year too.
Oh, yeah, you know, it's been so long since my kids.
It's just your Mary Hogan.
Yeah, they went to the college, but they haven't done it in so long.
They haven't been there the last two years.
Oh, I, since I've had kids there, they haven't.
It was called the first and second grade.
Okay.
My kid told me.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I know one of my kids went to Middlebury College. That was the last time, and that was.
That was the first year they did it.
Really? Okay, interesting. Gosh, time is flying, especially when you lose two years.
Yeah, so transportation, you mentioned, was an issue of Shoreham and Bridgeport. Why is it an issue for some of the other outlines, like Salisbury and?
I think those are the parents that he's heard from. So, he hasn't heard from parents from Salisbury and some of these other schools that transportation is big of an, is as big of an issue. So, but he does repeatedly hear from parents in those two communities.
The last piece you were talking about with the grant, the middle school, you're connecting with the community partnership council folks and some of the middle grade. I know that there's, I've been hearing about these initiatives through these other two groups, so I'm making sure that's all the same thing and we're not working in.
Yes, it is all the same thing. Yep. And actually, that is a, that's a requirement.
How many times are we going to apply to the same one?
Yeah, no. Middlebury as a municipality can only apply, our community can only apply for one.
Okay, and so that's coordinating the land. I know that that was part of the question, can we use this land?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Exactly.
First of all, thank you for being our representative to the Rec Board. It's really nice to know you're taking care of things. Any work planned on the sort of rec park property in the next year?
Well, they had just completely redone that totlot.
Yeah.
And planted all of those trees.
Right.
I know when, when the initial conversations about Better Places started, we were talking about a pump track in that area. And then, you know, we were like, well, we just planted the trees where we want to put the pump track. But, you know, I don't believe that there's anything else planned. I know that they've got some improvements planned for the pool. There's a climbing wall that's going to be going up against the pool, which is really cool. So, they've got some things in the works there, but I don't know that there's anything planned for the fields, but I can put that on task.
Was there something with the pool? I don't, you might not know this, but I thought the pool had to be rebuilt or?
I don't know. At one point, I do believe it was drained, but yeah. Yeah, I think it's all set, but again, we'll, I expect those details we'll hear a lot more about. But those are the kinds of things that when you, when you're not meeting, you're not necessarily.
That's a 30-year problem.
There's always something.
The heater doesn't work.
If anybody has any other questions that you want me to specifically take back to the committee, feel free to email me or reach out in any other way. Also, thank you.
One thing I just wanted to mention, you may have seen that communication about the crane that we sent out last week. So, there's been just awesome work happening across the district in pretty much all of our schools on varying fronts. Vigil that score is organizing is happening tomorrow night. There's all sorts of work happening in classrooms and throughout the district. It's great to see us kind of involved. And I think it's kind of what we need right now too, as we kind of find ourselves on our computers and on our screens, seeing all these things happening and not feeling like we can do anything about it. So, it's something that we're talking about a lot in all of our schools, that finding ways for students to engage right now is really, really important. And engaging in positive ways, ways that can make change. So, that is awesome, and I hope to see if there's more than you can make it at 6:30. The other thing before we talk about Esser context and planning, which is somewhat long presentation, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the plan for equity. You're finalizing a timeline. I have made copies to give to you tonight, and then realized there was a few more things to add. So, we're going to finalize this probably in the next two days, and I will send all of you a copy. We have been working with the advisory committee with Emma, who is our consultant, who's working with that advisory committee. That advisory committee right now is gathering further data, figuring out ways to get more data beyond what we've already gathered through the equity audits, that survey tool. Handover research, the consultant that we're working with on all the data and backend work. Our, the privacy agreement, which we were waiting for, how long was that dealing?
Months.
Months. Finally went through last week. So, we've got the green light, everything is go for them to take all of the data that we sent them. And this is all sorts of different data from all sorts of different sources in ACSD. That has been sent to them. We're going to get that back with a dashboard to be able to really start to comb through and look at. You know, we talk a lot anecdotally about, well, we feel like things are this way or that way, so to really be able to see where are we making it, where are we not? And how does that inform the work that the board does over the summer in establishing those foundational goals as you get the handoff from the advisory committee? We're looking at probably towards the end of August, and looking at the work that the advisory committee is doing to finish up the next probably three months in finding connections across the community to get data from people that don't normally take a survey, don't, you know, the underrepresented folks that we need to hear from as we go through this process. So, I will, I will be sharing that with all of you. It'll, I think, help to better understand the process when you get this timeline. This is a, you know, not nitty-gritty in terms of the exact dates, but we've kind of couched it in spring, summer, fall, and then to what we think is, we'll be at the conclusion toward the end of December.
You go first. And trying to reach the families and people who felt necessarily, they're on survey, is there any way to contact them personally and interview them? Or have a student or somebody or a representative?
So, the advisory committee is right now talking about, that is what they're talking about right now. For example, there was a parent who brought together Spanish-speaking families.
Right.
Last night, and are gathering information from them. So, we're doing this really differently than we normally do in terms of, okay, we're going to do these three things. You know, lots of communication, and then hope that all those, you know, seeds plant. Instead, we're kind of like going, like you said, going to the homes and doing those kinds of things to really make sure that we're reaching those people.
Great. Every day, as I was proving, I was listening to a podcast from the School Board Association, and they recently had an equity training, which I'm disappointed I didn't sign up for because I was listening to it. It was pretty awesome.
Was this DSBI or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and so it occurred to me as I was listening to this, like our advisory committee, and I mean even all of us, have we helped, you know, provided them any kind of bias training, that kind of thing, you know, to, you can't have too much of that.
Yeah.
From my experience.
I think Emma's doing a really, really kind of thoughtful work in not doing bias training with this group because we don't have time to bring this group together, do a lot of bias training. But she's really leading through with that lens in terms of what the group talks about, how she facilitates the meetings. Nicole is president of those meetings too. Nicole, do you want to speak for that? As our Director of Equity and Student Services.
About bias training?
With the advisory committee.
Yeah.
Just how they're doing the work with that lens.
I would, I would say right now, we're just entering, digging into the work of looking at what's happening across the district. Looking at data sets, looking, talking about what we're seeing with patterns. We spent the first bulk of our work just trying to figure out what do we mean by equity? And really spent a lot of time listening to the voices of students who are on group, parents who don't work for the district. And Emma's doing an amazing job of bringing all their voices together. We have not looked at bias training right now. Right, right. We don't really need bias.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you.
We need bias awareness.
Awareness, that's, yes, I kind of left out a word there. Thank you.
I need no views, Senator Eisen.
No, I did.
You know, part of some of what comes out of this process, I think, will, as we look at what, what they distill from all of this data they're collecting and what the board looks at, will then, you know, as we build those action teams in the fall and figure out where are we spending all of our time as a district? You know, is it in more kind of anti-racist, you know, biased awareness training? Or is it, you know, and in addition, it's probably going to be that, but it's going to also be layered on with, like, as we do the work. Like, equity doesn't exist over here. So, you know, we're doing equity work here, we're getting trained here, but then we're just continuing to do the work we do in the same way we always do it, with the same blind spots and blinders, et cetera. So, that's the challenge of this work is in many organizations which are calcified and siloed. And, you know, everyone who works in an organization experiences this at some level. How do we, how do we bring equity into this conversation right now? As opposed to, I've been trained, and therefore, I work in an equity-grounded way. You know, it's about personal transformation too, both of the individual and of the.
Totally, all of us.
Everyone, all of us, yeah.
Yes, all of us.
Here, can you talk a little bit about the, when the data are being delivered to the board, what, what that will look like? I mean, I sort of presume there'll be some kind of synthesis that's happening, patterns identified, things like that? Or is the board going to be part of that review of raw stuff and kind of working with the advisory committee?
So, the advisory committee, I think, is still, and Emma is still, like, trying to figure out what that final distilled, when they talk about distilled data. What does that mean to be distilled? Like, how refined is it? So, looking at patterns and looking at those patterns and ensuring this is a pattern that was found 25 times or that kind of thing. So, that is something that the advisory committee has to talk about. What they have discussed thus far is working on recommendations based on that data. I don't, I think it's fine, you know, for the board to see any of the data. But the work of that advisory committee is to, again, to bring voices to the work, representative voices to the work, so that when the board gets this, it's not just in this room and from this governance kind of perspective, but really getting the voices from the entire community. So, their, you know, their, their goal is kind of twofold. One, to be out in the community, connecting and bringing that information in, and then figuring out how to put it together to present in terms of recognition.
And I presume the timeline that we'll get in the next few days, is that sort of layout where we might be involved when we're going to get?
Yeah.
Because I know this whole group, we all feel how important this work is. And it's, we can be patient, but I think it's hard. It's hard to be patient, and so it would be great to hear sort of the expectations around how we can be helpful as well as when. Anyone else?
I wanted to go on the survey, and I couldn't do it because I wasn't a student, I wasn't a parent, and I was a faculty. So, when will the regular community be able to do the survey? Is it too late?
Yeah, I think they've already collected it ready.
Yeah, it's. I couldn't do it either.
Yeah. No, I couldn't do that.
Yeah, I couldn't do it.
I guess they'd go to lie, yeah.
Nobody, oh.
It's kind of a stretch. That's something that could be noted and delivered to the advisory committee.
Yeah.
There's a whole swath of folks who would want to participate.
Right.
Well, we were just broken up into groups, looking at, I think, I'm in a group, I'm talking about staff and looking at this survey data and trying to figure out what else maybe. So, if there's a group that, community-based.
A lot of it, even for those of us who could take, a lot of the questions were unanswered. Not having been in the schools for a while, you know, questions like.
That's why I don't, I didn't get on it, and that was my impression.
Yeah, has your child, you know, worked in a group with kids different from that? No, I hope so.
There's a 39-page white paper apparently on the survey.
On the survey. Well, I know, I remember you saying that this was a national survey. This is another survey that the steering committee came up with, right?
We did add, we did add some questions to the survey, so the advisory committee felt like, as they reviewed it, they asked, could we add some? And, you know, given the kind of survey validity, initially, they had said, well, if you want this to be valid, you should not change every question. I like this word, not that word.
It must be a standard.
But they did add, but they did add some questions at the end. And some of that, which might be a nice segue, some of the, some of those questions were related to Esser and the information that we needed to gather from the community as we look at investments. So, we are going to present tonight on Esser context and planning. We've been doing a ton of work. Caitlin's been doing a ton of work. Logan is doing. Caitlin's been doing a ton of work, Logan is doing a ton of work. We've all been doing a lot of work to figure out, did our, our best or how we're moving forward. So there was a conversation about this last, was it last Tuesday or? Caitlin, Tuesday, the conversation?
Yep.
Yeah. There was a meeting on Tuesday. We sent a presentation out that you all maybe saw a few weeks ago. And, you know, as we look at, at where we're spending these funds, we're really kind of trying to figure out, looking at our data and figuring out where the most need is. We are, as we look at where these investments are going, and I think as we reached out to our community, it was pretty clear that people wanted to invest in positions as opposed to some of the other things that were on the list. We had some HVAC work at Mary Hogan. We had some windows and doors, security cameras and things like that. We also had counseling positions and other support services throughout our school. So we are, and Caitlin and Nicole are going to be doing this presentation together. We're going to be working really pointedly to look at where the most need is and funneling these dollars towards those schools and those classrooms with those students that, based on the information that we have, need the most support. We are also really, really cognizant of the fact that this is a two-year flush of funds that just goes away. And if we don't set ourselves up for having some kind of solid system in place, when these monies dry up, we're going to be in a real challenging place. And in my experience, when you add positions into a budget, it's really hard to say goodbye to those positions. And, and oftentimes, there's a great argument for every position that we have. So we are, we are trying to do this in a context where we, we put the money where the need is greatest while also realizing that we need to be prepared for '24 when we don't have these funds anymore, when the state surplus is gone and they can't throw 45 million here and 45 million there. And the waiting study, which is still in process. Ruth Hardy, who was the co-chair on that task force, will be coming in May to talk to the board and present. I was just talking to her today. So I think it's going to be the second meeting in May. She'll be coming to do a quick presentation and answer questions on that. So there's a lot, there's a lot to think about here. I think this, this presentation will be helpful to give the board a sense of kind of where we are and how we're taking community feedback to funnel these funds in the directions that we most need it.
So what was this kind of scope of the community feedback? What was the, the universe that was?
Will go, will go deeper.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm not going to steal any more thunder.
Feeling thunder, you're saying, huh?
Okay, I'm trying to. I'm, I'm trying to.
I hope it's okay if I spam. So, hi, everybody. I think here said Tuesday was when the ESAR conversations were happening and we realized someplace between Tuesday and Thursday that would actually hopefully be helpful to also give the information about student service to set the context even more deeply. So I don't think this is in your board yet. So we will get it to you. And I'm going to go as slow as fast as you, okay?
Well, yeah, and I also want to say, this, this presentation is very text heavy, especially when we get to the ESAR stuff that I've produced. So we'll run through it relatively quickly, but then make sure that you have access to it for reference, so you can look back at the details.
My computer's not working.
Fair enough.
Shut off. The right clicker, right? We can do it the old fashioned way, it just means I will be seamless as I like to be. The purpose! So here's the purpose of this slideshow. I believe there's four points. Point one, point one, this information will continue to inform our ESAR grants. Purpose two.
We got to get a functioning clicker.
I know, I got to know one of that.
I got one here.
Point two is, it's also important to think about this when you're seeing this information, to anticipate the state is moving forward two really significant changes for schools. Special ed rules change will change on July 1st, and Act 173, which shifts funding for special education. The third purpose for this slideshow.
Yes.
Is, wait for it. We want to give you time to think about the current student service data because in April Caitlin and I are going to prepare, we're going to present to you about MTSS, that multi-tiered systems of service. And then the fourth reason, wait for it. Yes! We think it'll also help, we know some of you, maybe all of you I don't actually know, are going to be torn schools, and so I thought it would be helpful to have this information in your heads and hearts as you enter the school front doors. Okay, moving on. So here's the background. This is probably the most important slide. Ready? One, this data is current as of March 25th, was that Friday? I don't even remember. It's just that moment in time, it will change. It's not two years ago, it's not a year ago, it's not two months ago, it's March 25th, and it'll be different by May 1st. Number two, it's collected through multiple data streams, and it is as accurate as those streams were on March 25th. Caitlin and I have a lot of work to do in terms of helping us become more data cohesive. So this is, this is me pulling from many places. Number three, this data is descriptive. That just means it's a summary of data. It is not a statistical analysis to uncover relationships between data sets. There's no statistics happening. Okay? And four, you're going to want to make a story of it. I'm dying to make a story of it. Resist the urge. Let it, let it help inspire curiosity. What's that great quote about the questions, live the questions? This is a live the questions presentation because your mind is, you'll see. When we get to the first one, you're going to go, oh, that's what's happening. Resist it. Write down questions if you need to, that you can carry with you. Okay? So here's some glossary of terms because not, you know, schools are full of, full of targets. Here we go. IEP is an individual education plan. There are 13 federal disability categories for IEPs. And an IEP covers both modifications and accommodations to the school's curriculum to ensure access to the general education curriculum. It's often referred to as specialized instruction. So when I talk about IEPs, I'm talking about plans that ensure access to the general education curriculum. 504 plans are different. They are part of civil, a civil right to environmental accommodations to ensure access. To have a 504 plan requires that there's a, you have a disability that, that has a substantial impact on a major life activity. A major life activity is learning. I'm going to keep going. EST, educational support team, known as an EST plan. This is a Vermont thing, right? So federal, federal, Vermont. A team comes together to collaboratively to determine whether additional supports are needed to help a student make progress in school. These plans are produced by these teams and are referred to as EST plans. Keep going? Okay. MTSS, the newest and the latest term. Oh. Uh-oh, now you know what it looks like. MTSS, it stands for a multi-tiered system of services for three tiers of instructional practices, not students. That's a really important thing, if you hear me, I'm going to say it again. It's tiered instructional practices, not tiered students. It's about what we do. So tiers one, two, and three, you'll see on the next slide. This is a public health model. It started in hospitals. And it pretty much looks like this. You've got tier three, and those tier three practices in our context are IEPs, and they're the most intensive. When people talk about tiered supports, the like, long-term goal is that only 5% of a student population needs really intensive support because down here, they're getting such rich instruction. Tier two, in our context, is 504 and EST plans. And 504 and EST plans target supports from the general education environment. It's not specialized instruction. And it's generally thought that 10 to 15% of the student population can access the general curriculum with tier two practices. And then finally, the largest tier, 80% of student population, their learning needs are met by tier one practices. And this is the model that the state is moving towards. They don't, when you look it up, they don't show you a triangle, they have a swirling circle. They mean the same thing. I just think that conceptually, where we are in understanding this, this is a little bit easier to understand than the swirl. But at some point, I'm happy to come back and talk about the swirl. Okay. Let's see what's next.
I have a quick question, will that?
Yeah.
Currently, what do we have that would be considered tier three? If the goal is 5%, we're, we're.
I'm about to take you on that journey. Okay. So here we are, tier two and tier three practices right now on March 25th. So here's our enrollment of the March 25th. I don't imagine anything here will surprise you. The bars that have black around them are Title I schools. Right, so Title I schools get supplemental funds because of the highest student concentrations of poverty. Okay? So here's tier three practices. The percentage of students who are supported by IEP plans by school.
Looking at Mums and MUHS, they don't, they don't qualify for the tier one at all? Or is it only elementary school?
For Title I, the only Title I schools right now are Bigport, Mary Hogan, Salisbury, and Shore.
So the, all the students who fall into the middle school and the high school, the poverty level never reaches the thing, okay?
The FRL data is given back to us by, it's reported from us to the state. They process it, report it back to us every year. And these numbers change every year. So schools that qualify and do not qualify change from year to year. In the time that I've been here, Mums and MUHS have never had a high enough poverty rate to qualify for Title I funds.
Okay, I'm going to keep going. Okay. So that's tier three practices on March 25th. So here's 504 plans, which is one part of tier two practices. Resist the urge to create a story in your head. We really don't have a story yet. What we have is an awareness of what's happening right now. Okay, and let's go on to the second part of tier two practices, which are EST plans. So Will, if you can do slides eight, nine, and 10 again. I'm, I'm incredibly, slide eight is tier. Just getting everybody in the moment. Tier three practices, the most intensive. Part of tier two practices, 504 plans, accommodations. And then the next one? And then EST plans. Okay, again, what EST is, yeah. We go back to the. EST is an educational support team.
Do those overlap? If you want EST or you want to discuss on how you'd be in the 504?
You can have all three, you could have two, you could have one, or none. You definitely have none. Okay.
Could I ask a quick question? Of course. In your model, and I'm tripping on the game again, what you said was that at tier three, ideally in the model, you want 5% of people at tier three. And 5%.
I'm ready to have it, sorry.
And tier two gives a combination of the last three slides giving itself.
Tier two is a combination of the last two.
Exactly.
The 504 and EST. Yeah. And, and since you're asking that question, Caitlin's got a lot to cover. I'll talk more about MTSS when we come back. Maybe you're asking.
The question is, is there any way to see the combination of what is the total number of people that are at tier two?
So what I can show you is this.
Okay.
Because our data system doesn't support right now, in a quick manner, for me to tell you how many kids have only one plan or two plans or three plans. That's going to take a while for me to.
We need to build that system.
Yeah. For me to figure out, but this is for right now, right? So there could be a kid who's involved, who's getting practices in all three.
So we can't just add 504 and EST and get that here?
No, we can't. And if we think about it in terms of practices and not kids, it actually helps to read it a little bit differently, right? So we've got personnel in our schools, I'm looking at MUHS just because it's right close to my hand. We've got personnel in our schools, right, where they're providing 8% our EST, our EST practices, 504 practices, and special education practices.
Yeah. I'm just wondering about the EST, probably EST practices overlap with the 504 practices. It seems like because they're in the same tier, and the 504 is, is a national, and the EST is more of a Vermont thing. Is it, is it just kind of like what we're calling it maybe? And are there some overlapping techniques that are happening? But maybe Mums schools labeling it as 504 together is more of that EST?
Um, it's likely not the last thing you said. So a 504 plan means that you've met, that you have shown evidence of a disability, and so we accommodate the environment for that. We could be accommodating it similarly, but an EST is a little bit more about. So you can think of a 504 sometimes as like taking an obstacle away. And an EST can be more about pushing in targeted support of literacy. So taking away note-taking versus learning phonetics in a new way. Those are two that don't overlap. Can they overlap? Possibly. Yeah.
The EST is, is that in order to get support services from that, do you need to have then, you know, some kind of testing done? Medical?
Nothing medical. Okay, EST, but definitely assessment data. Okay.
And we'll be looking closely at that at our next presentation.
Okay.
About how these tiers interact with each other.
So is the EST something like a kid that needs a little extra help with reading and gets pulled out for like a small group thing for a little bit? Or is it more than that?
An EST is a practice, it's, think of it as like you get your first dopes of instruction, right? That first time, everybody learns how to like CVC words, consonant, vowel, consonant. And then we provide practices where you double dopes CVC words, where you learn it two or three times more, maybe in a new way, so that it really, so that you really get it. I'm trying to avoid saying it's about kids because it's really about practices.
I'm talking about the practice of like, what actually happens in school, where a kid might go and get that extra instruction. That, the act of that instruction, I'm not talking about the kid, I'm talking about the instruction. Is that, is that an example of an EST practice that would count in your?
It, it could be, yes, if it's, if it's provided by an interventionist or a classroom teacher.
Correct.
So it's important, you don't have to leave the classroom. You can enter the classroom, but you don't have to. Does that help?
Yes, I think it's just a matter of semantics, but yes.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm kind of, I'm very concerned about the 504, whether 504s in the high school. I mean, they're significantly hot, more than double what's in the middle school. So is it, I mean, they have to have a diagnosis, correct, to get a 504? Yep. So is this primarily, I mean, I know there's physical disabilities, but are we looking at mental disabilities here? Or behavioral disabilities?
If, if I, if I answered that question, I would be guessing.
Okay.
Because I haven't broken down the data by disability category.
Okay.
But just to, just to kind of shed a little light on that, I mean, I think what happens often, and, you know, just being as a parent, as a child on the planet, who's been a part of these percentages, oftentimes, the difficulty is what prompts, you know, so as curriculum gets more challenging, that's what prompts any evaluation, so. So, um, it can be uncommon, I don't think it would be uncommon for, you know, as, as it increases in difficulty.
But it's identified later because of the rigor of the.
Yeah.
I would be mindful even that can do.
This is where you cautious.
I know.
The important thing to say is, huh. Let's find out more about that, right?
Yeah.
And I wonder if there's another slide. I can't remember.
We gotta ask questions.
I'm going to hand over to Caitlin, yeah.
I have a matching slide at the end of mine, so you have more questions.
Is your gentle way of saying, I have questions?
Hang on to them. All right, this should look familiar because you've seen a version of this slideshow before. And this is a bit of an abrupt transition, right? So we've got this big pot of money that we want to spend. You know that our theme for this year is access, success, and belonging. We really care about that. And that context of identified needs in our system is informing our work, but in a nonlinear way at this point. So we wanted to give you an update on our ESER thinking. You've seen the bit here where we're just reviewing, you've seen this before, what ESER stands for. You've seen the allowable uses. When I came in, when I presented in December, we looked at these slides. So this is very broad what we can spend our ESER funds on. You've seen what we can do with the ARP IDEA. That's the, um, from the same act as ARP ESER. This is the special education component of it. So that's not new information. And you've seen this table before, right? So we have in this ESER family of grants, about $5.3 million, about $5.4 million to spend between now and September of 2024. That's when the lasses have been dry up for us. Um, you can see the smallest, well, I guess the smallest is the IDEA, but ESER one, ESER two, and this big ARP ESER. You can see that we've done our initial applications for the first three, though they're all amendment, the amendment window is open still for all three of those. The first one, um, our final amendments for ESER one are due May 1st, and we have to spend them down by the end of September. And then they're basically about a year later for ESER two, and then another year later for ARP ESER. This is just context about where this money goes. You've seen this before. So we had $403,000 and change for ESER one. This is what we did with it. Recently reconciled this grant. We have about $36,000 still on the table. Click and show up there. Yeah. So about, about $36,000 based on basically a position that we hired later in the year than we wanted to. So we didn't end up paying for the full 1.0 FTE. So we've got some, and other little things like that in terms of how much do these investments actually cost us. So this is still on the table to be reallocated by May 1st. Um, go ahead. This is what we've done with ESER two, and you've seen this slide before. Um, and you can see that some of them are our SEL coordinator, which we had funded partially in ESER one. We extended it, we finished funding it for this year in ESER two, and we continued it for next year in ESER two. So that's already covered. Same thing with our literacy coordinator. It's funded for next year in ESER two. So this is all story you've seen before. And again, we'll make sure you have these slides so you can look back at them. If you click one more time, because Caitlin, just a reminder, not all of us have seen before. So we will make sure that everybody has access to it. So we have, again, once we reconciled the grant to reflect what we've currently spent and what we are projected to spend on these positions. We've got about $269,000 left to spend in ESER two. Maybe click one more time. That will be partially consumed by, um, we have hiring a literacy interventionist for the high school for next school year and extending that third principal at Mums for one more school year. So that will be covered in this remaining ESER two money. And that won't eat all of that. So there's a little bit of money still on the table that we haven't planned for yet in ESER two. Any questions? Because that's basically the end of the review of this, and then we're, I think it is. Wait, go ahead. You've, actually, you've seen this before, and if you click one more time. This is how we were doing, spending our ARP IDEA, and the plan is just to carry these investments forward. They don't expire this year, so we can keep doing this work. We haven't spent all the money. Okay? Caitlin, yeah.
For the other two that you presented for, we still have money to spend. I believe you said allocate, which means they could be spent beyond the date, or we have to spend it by that September date?
Oh, Logan, tell me if I get this wrong. Basically, basically, we need to have it spent by that September 30th. So I, I don't think that we, so what's really clear is we can't be employing people in that school year when it expires on September 30th. But I think in fact, like, we've got construction projects running, they need to be done by then. But there are, there's some little bit of gray, right? There's like 90 days to like liquidate something.
Yeah, it, it's kind of a matter of committed. Like, we haven't, we know what the money's earmarked for, and it's in progress, which is different than a teacher for a staff member who hasn't actually provided those services yet. That doesn't really count. But if it's kind of committed.
Their contract, you know, that still doesn't.
If it's kind of, the rights to it is no longer ours, that kind of cuts it.
So ARP ESER is the big one. This is not, this is a review still too, right? The 3.3 million that we haven't allocated yet. Um, we have to spend at least 20% of it on addressing learning loss, using evidence-based interventions. That's defined in, in the regulations. We, this one's a little bit wonky. We need to, we need to develop and make publicly available a plan for safe return to in-person instruction. We got this information last winter after we had published our plan for safe returns in August before, right? And so we needed to repost it and open it for public comment to check this box, which was, it was just an awkward thing to have to do to be in compliance. But we did the thing. So this is done, and this you'll see reflected in our, um, in our grant planning. Okay, so we have been engaged in extensive stakeholder engagement through all of our response to COVID. And some of it, when it informs our grants, can count toward ARP ESER stakeholder engagement, even if we did it before they rolled out the regulations. So some of this is from the past. ARP ESER has extra and specific requirements about how we need to engage, not so much how, but that we need to engage stakeholders across a wide range of categories in meaningful ways. And so we've done our very best with that. And we've definitely, we, we've met the minimum bar, and I think in many places that we've gone above and beyond. Challenging our, challenging to engage our sort of civil rights groups, tribes. There are really specific categories that we needed to make sure that we connected with. So we started grant planning with an initial needs assessment in the winter of 2021. We did an employee survey, survey that spring, last spring. We did our board presentation about ESER funds in December. Our recovery planning team, which has been meeting since June of 2020, I believe, has looked at ESER funding at three different meetings and had conversations about that. We did, in that equity diagnostic survey, which is the Hanover survey that you weren't, many of you weren't able to access. We added questions about ESER funding because we were blasting that to so many people. And rather than ask for their input on multiple tools, we embedded it in there. So we got a lot, we got 800 and something responses to that survey, which was great. Then, um, so from that, we were really able to start to narrow down our focus. We did, this is that Tuesday conversation that Nicole was talking about. I presented our draft thinking of our ARP ESER planning to ACSD educators last Tuesday, and we had a conversation about that. We, we published the same slideshow online and opened a Google form to collect feedback. So we had feedback in that conversation, but we also had 57 responses to that survey. So that's this online communication and feedback form. And then for some of those harder to capture voices, underrepresented groups, Emily Blitstein actually went and scheduled one-on-one and small group conversations and talked to them about this funding opportunity, what we're thinking about in receiving feedback. And I'll take your question, one second.
No worries.
This plan, our plan is called the Public Plan for ARP ESER Spending. We're required to have it posted online tomorrow and open for public comment. We're finishing it up tonight. It'll be online tomorrow, it'll be open for public comment for the month of the year. Yay! Right up to the wire.
Even at the old college books.
Um.
So the online communication and feedback form, what was the target body of? That was kind of the other subject, previous question I asked.
So we opened, we, we mostly were asking to engage our, for this presentation and conversation, we were asking to have a conversation with ACSD employees, staff, faculty, administrators, really just opening it up to say, hey, this is what we're thinking. Please, from your positions in our system, give us your feedback. But, but then we thought that there's no reason to not collect feedback from other people as well. And so Emily posted it online and you emailed it out? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, I think it was, maybe it was Friday, Friday.
So it went out to the whole ACSD community, right? So it was a link to the actual slideshow, and then there was a Google form. I can't remember if it was Google, if it was in the email or just posted on the webpage. So, so that we showed them, you know, what are we thinking about spending? And you'll see the feedback, you'll see a real brief summary of the quantitative feedback from that survey. Um, and we have, I mean, 57 isn't a phenomenal turnout, but it was nice to get some other personnel to get that. No, but we, but it went out beyond just educators, yeah. I wonder if you didn't send a practice.
If it goes, Joanna, I don't know what plans it was. You know, it's like, I'm.
Would I, would we do a bit on the ACSD work day, or the work day?
I think it's still posted, the Google form is closed with the recent project. All right, so.
The problem is all that.
If you, um, if you agree that the plan is going to be posted tomorrow, you will see that it has a little bit of a narrative about each of these folks in what we did to engage people and helping learn from that. Okay. So now we want to tell you what we want to do with this money. Broadly speaking, our investment strategy follows a three major categories. So mental health slash social motor learning slash positive behavior. Access and success in academic learning, and healthy schools with a specific focus on individual development. So those are our three large categories. So we had a challenge, and this is the challenge basically that we presented to our colleagues last week. We had a wish list of $5 million that we'd pay, and $3.3 million we've spent. So we, so as I mentioned, we've done a lot of engagement recently to really try to help us narrow that list and understand what the community thinks will be the most positively impactful investment. This is way more than you can read in tiny font in this format, so we'll make sure you got it at your fingertips. There are, we, we proposed in our public, in our public presentation, seven different investments related to mental health, SEL, positive behavior. And you can see the blue bars are what people, those 57 respondents, reported as the first priority of spending. Red is the second priority, orange is the third, and green is, this is not a priority, right? So we had seven, and we kind of wanted to force people to, to trim where they needed to trim, so that we could understand what makes the cut and what doesn't. This is, was highly popular. It's extending the FTE of school counselors. I think this is predominantly looking at our outlying schools who have a counselor for one or two days a week. There's real interest in increasing that access to school counselors in those facilities. Um, this was social workers, prevention specialists in our elementary and grade schools, these two. This is continuing the one at Shoreham, and this is adding another one to fill gaps of unmet needs in the district. This is continuing those behavior interventionist positions at Mums for one more school year. Um, an outdoor club at MUHS, a high bar for not a priority. And you'll see it didn't make our cut in our spending plan. And updating the security camera systems at Mums in the high school also didn't resonate with our stakeholder groups.
Can I just ask, is this only the 57 that filled out? This does not reflect the conversations that you have?
Right, so I think that's a really important point. We've done all of this stakeholder engagement, and I'm showing you just one slice of one of those things that we did to show you sort of the last, the last data that we really considered as we. And if you read that plan, it goes into much more detail about the various steps that brought us to this point. Okay.
Question?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the fund for the outdoor club at MUHS. There's a great deal of research that points to the fact that if you get kids outside, there's an social benefit, psychological benefit. So I wonder if this was couched in proper terms, so that people really understood that situation. I doubt it.
No, we didn't go deep in any of these, but just for the capacity of moving the information out and getting the feedback back. I'm not sure that an outdoor club will have the same kind of impact that you're talking about as much as systematizing outdoor practice in our schools. So I think that just because it's not making up the cut for our ARP ESER investments, doesn't mean that it's not a thing that we care about and want to.
I hope that an outdoor club could compare many variations of itself. And it was certainly fed into what you just indicated, the Great College uses it, pre their freshmen coming in. It's well stated and well known.
Yeah, you're right, yes, I agree. All right, let's look at our next category. Oh, sorry, we did ask this question, you know, based on what we're proposing, and we gave them a sort of dollar amount for what it would cost to do all of those things, estimated. And we said, you know, blue is, this seems like about the right amount to spend on this category of mental health, SEL. Um, red was, you should spend more in this area. Orange was, you should spend less in this area. And green was, I don't know whether this is, feels right or not.
Yeah, so, and again, this is the 50 some respondents. So do we know geographically where those respondents are? Because that could really skew.
Oh, yes, Mary Hogan made a very strong representation.
Okay, so that's, yeah, so you have to kind of put that green.
Yeah.
Working at the data.
Right, you shouldn't, just like Nicole wasn't giving us any statistical analysis, we're just showing you raw numbers that we collected. And knowing that this is really just a slice of the way that we process the information. Absolutely, there are people who showed up because they cared very deeply about this thing, largely. Okay, next one. So there, this breaks down into two slides because we have a lot of things that we wanted to do in terms of access, success, and success in academic learning. So again, the pink is, this is not a top priority. And then we let them rank up to their top six because there are two slides of this, there were 12 different ideas presented. So we're looking at extending our preschool coordinator for, in the halftime position for a third year, to give us just another year to really build those systems. Extending our literacy coordinator for a third year. Continuing to fund foundational literacy material supplies PD. Funding of literacy interventionists at the high school for a second year. Remember, it showed up for our first year, next year in ESER two. So this would be extending it for a second year. Hiring, we proposed hiring a math coordinator. The feedback that we got was very much, we don't want another coordinator, we want somebody working with students. And so you're going to see that this becomes math interventionist at the high school in our proposed plan. Um, and investing in math PD collaboration and resources. The next slide. More things, so hiring a 0.5 FTE multi-annual community liaison really helped us to engage second language learners and families and do a lot of outreach to underrepresented members of our community. Hire a summer and after-school programming coordinator, hire a summer and after-school educators. Continue to fund the general educator position at Mums. Remember, in ESER two, we brought in another general educator at Mums. And the plan here is that we pay for it one more year in ESER two, and then we basically bought ourselves a year to write that into the local budget. That gets us up to that four, that four-team staffing model. We added two positions this year. We'll need to add one more next year to sustain those four teams. But for now, it's in ESER. Continuing to fund the special educator at Mums for a second year, next year, and adding a classroom teacher at Mary Hogan. So that's what we got for that category. And 38.6% said that looks about right. Uh, 29.8 said that we should increase spending. A very small percentage said we should decrease it. Very small percentage said we should decrease it. So that's where we were with that one, okay. We had big ideas for building projects. We were actually proposing about $2 million of work on HVAC systems in Mary Hogan and the high school, and replacing windows and doors at Cornwall, Mary Hogan, Salisbury, and the high school. So that's what we floated, and you can see top priority unsure and not a priority for each of these. And you can see the same breakdown about, seems about right, we should increase our spending, we should decrease our spending, and I'm not sure. So we also collected open-ended responses. So there's a lot of information that people gave to us about their thinking around how we were doing, they agree, they disagree, joyfully, vehemently, we got it all. And so we've been thinking about that and reflecting. And then our leadership team met this morning to do sort of a final, okay, so what do we know from our stakeholder engagement? So Peter and Logan, Nicole and I, and Bruce representing facilities, and Emily, who's been helping with our stakeholder engagement extensively, we all met and tried to synthesize that. And so what you'll see in these next slides and in the public facing plan that gets public attention more detail tomorrow, here's what we propose. And again, this plan will be open for public comment for a month. So in the category of mental health, social emotional learning, and positive behavior supports, we want to spend about $981,000. Continuing that position, the social worker prevention specialist at Shoreham, and adding a position to serve unmet needs, the same kind of position to serve unmet needs in other places in the district for two years. So this is the third year at Shoreham, and the next two years, addressing needs based on data. Continuing our SEL coordinator for a third year, continuing our behavior interventionist for a second year, and retention bonuses for education. Yes. This is what we propose in that category, go ahead, Will. This is a big one. So under access and success in academic learning, we propose about $1.5 million, extending our preschool coordinator, our literacy coordinator, doing a second year of literacy interventionist at the high school, continuing to build our foundational literacy materials, which is a lot of decodable texts, and really building those libraries to support early literacy development. Hiring a math interventionist at the high school for two years, investing in math materials PD and collaboration. That second year of the general educator at Mums, and the special educator at Mums. That second year of the third principal at Mums. Adding a general educator in Mary Hogan for two years in the first grade. And investing in summer and after-school programming, hiring a coordinator for two years, reserving funds to pay educators, and to consider challenges around transportation. We don't know what that model will be, but the idea would be to invest big in the short term to build a thing that we can sustain over time. It's a bit of a leap, but it's an identified need. And then finally, the multilegal community liaison, .5 FTE for two years.
I may be missing something, but if you're going to be asking for public comment on the use of these funds, are you somehow going to indicate that 57 people, individuals are the basis of it?
Well, you'll see, there is more than a page of explanation of how we engage stakeholders, and these 57 are sort of the last thing that we did as we had really narrowed down our focus. It will just be one piece of that narrative. All right, next slide. We propose that we spend $83,000 on, something like that.
Okay, finish this slide then.
On our indoor air quality. That would mean replacing the HVAC systems in the A wing and C wing of Mary Hogan, and doing some of the engineering work to set ourselves up for the replacement in the high school H wing. This won't get, this won't get this project done, but it will get it underway, will get sort of poised to be funded in another way.
I'm just curious now, we've gone after any of the original, I think it was CRF money that went through to efficiency Vermont, toward ventilation work. Were they ever part of work at Chicago?
We did, and we are actually working on a farm right now for a wave ridge in Cornwall.
So that's not included?
It's not included in this, yeah.
No, and you will see, Logan raised his hand, you will see in our public plan that we also outlined that this plan is about our bester, but these other six grants are related to our COVID recovery. Does it address what Peter was just asking in that table?
I don't know if this will address it, but there's another round of $15 million of the CRF, or I think it's CRF, efficiency Vermont indoor air quality money that's newly available, and COVID HVAC, uh, COVID HVAC, Cornwall HVAC overhaul, and wave ridge, I think it's HVAC work, we're pursuing with that money.
And the leap into after-school programming, some of the original federal money was, it almost required that there be after-school programming. And I'm just curious now, if that was able to be spent, I know there's a terrible problem with funding that.
It almost destroyed us. Yep, we, not to be too dramatic, no. We needed to pull off summer programming using those funds in very short order without staff to lead it. And Nicole and I lost many hours of sleep trying to pull that off at the start of this past summer. We ended up, I think our original investment, I would need to look back to be really clear, I think it was around $195,000. We ended up spending less than $195,000.
For instance, people lack of staff.
We couldn't find, we couldn't find people to do the work, people were exhausted. So, you know, we're proposing that we need a coordinator, somebody to spearhead it and really lead the work, but then also to pay for educators to do the work if they're willing to do it. So you can see, we've got a lot of positions that we're trying to hire. We've been trying to hire physicians all year. So we, again, we can amend this grant, you know, as we post positions and they don't fill, we can amend them out of the grant up to near the end of the whole spending period. When we amend them, I believe we need to also amend the actual public plan. So we'd like to get it close to right to start, because that's easier for us. And also, when it just doesn't pan out the way that we expected to, it's really a pretty dynamic grant model.
Part of it is, there's going to be a lot of competition, because there are schools that's got significantly more money.
All right, yep, yep. And we might attract people from our own system, which will then create new holes for us, sorry. Yeah, for the indoor quality, how did we determine, and also even for the grants you're currently working on with efficiency Vermont, how did we decide what schools that we would go after?
Bruce has done a lot of study of all of our HVACs, so he knows, he's kind of queued up which ones are having the most need. And there was a lot of measurement that happened during this COVID period to know more than we ever thought we should know about our HVAC systems.
Okay, so it was based on assessment of what needs it the most?
There's been a lot, yeah, there's been a lot of measurement to make sure that rooms were kind of quote-unquote up to code, and that's where I think at the start of COVID, we started to understand more about our HVAC systems than we had previously, as they came into such focus too, I think for a few months.
Would we consider posting that on the website, so that if someone's looking at this, they would basically say, oh, okay, that makes sense? Just kind of disclosing, well, this is what we, our, our.
Kind of the analysis of why.
Our most need, you know, as far as.
They already have something, you know if he has anything like that.
It, yeah, because it would just help people to say, oh, yeah, that makes sense based on that. Otherwise, it's kind of a natural question. Why not high school, or whatever?
I think a lot of the parts and stuff, the heart here, we have a lot of the stuff that happens like.
Yeah. Sure. Which could be true at other places too. So having that assessment somewhere, I think would help people.
Joanna, I was trying to reconcile that last slide that just disappeared with an earlier bar graph that said sort of the HVAC system was very high, low, or not a priority. And so is there anything that wasn't funded that you got, that you asked for feedback on? It seemed like in your proposal that we're looking, or you're looking to get public comment on, was everything included, just funded at different levels?
If you go back to the, things like that, work forward. No, this, I think we're going the wrong direction.
I think it was one of the two big bar graphs, and I think the blue was top priority, actually.
Ah, this is it.
Yeah.
Right, so blue is a top priority on this. This is, these graphs are generated by Google forms and they arbitrarily change the colors. So be not confused by the colors. In this one, blue is the top priority, red is unsure, and yellow, orange is not a priority. So you were never, you were never asking, you know, invest in infrastructure versus invest in staff? That was never something that you were asking. We got that information in open-ended responses, opinions about that. But no, we said, look, we want to fund investments across three categories. We can't do all of the things. In this category of mental health and social, how would you rank these? In this category of academic learning, how would you rank these? So we didn't actually ask them to compare.
Sorry, I think it did come through, and it's what we talked about this morning, when we initially started this process, we went right, we saw this monstrous, you know, $3 million, and we thought, okay, we have so many facilities need that we never get to. This would be really part of this, because it's so hard for us to fill that into the budget. So that was our initial thinking, and as we have talked to more and more people and gathered information, again, beyond this 57, right, so this one slice of this whole process, we realized that the predominant wisdom from our community is, let's focus on physicians and people. In addition, what we talked about this morning, and what has been talked about here, is also the fact that we are right on the end of the analysis of elementary and secondary schools' facilities, facility analysis that TruX Cullum is just finishing up like this month. So we'll be talking, I think, and we'll be bringing a recommendation here to look at bonding at some point, whether that's next March or another time, to deal with all of these delayed maintenance issues across our district that we have to take care of, and we're not going to ever be able to build this into a budget. So that was another consideration too. Are we going to be able to fill all these positions that we're putting forward? I'd be really surprised, and I think that is going to be the biggest challenge, is finding people.
But Joanna, to your point, we had a pretty large proportion of people saying we're spending too much on our healthy schools, on our construction projects. We had put forward $2 million worth of investment, and we dialed it back down to $880,000. So trying to be responsive to that feedback and address the most critical needs quickly.
Like the other thing that we have talked about over really the last one, a year and a half of these federal funds, is thinking about the right positions and not wanting to, being really cognizant of that clip that I mentioned before, that 24, we're going to have none of these positions, and we're going to be back to or into a new, hopefully a new paradigm as we kind of like learn from this time period and think about our current staffing structures. And I think, you know, at budget time next year, and definitely a year after, we'll be having some pretty hard conversations around which positions are really critical, which positions aren't. And I would imagine that we're going to find that some positions that we put in place, we're not going to want to let go of, and we're going to have to either look at other positions that we have that we need to think about differently, or, you know, take it into the budget, and we can only, we've got some other pressures happening too with all the other stuff we talk about in the studio.
And you won't be surprised, I'm going to ask this question, because it's like, oh, here she goes again. I always kind of look at, from a fiscal responsibility perspective, regardless of if it's this money or tax benefit, whatever, how do we know what that, the monies, you know, what we've spent has been affected, right? Because that's like the million dollar question that people ask, and there's nothing I know of that I can point to that shows that assessment and says, yep, you know, yeah, maybe we didn't quite get the hope that we, you know, honestly wanted to get, but we got improvement here. And.
Well, I think if you look at, you know, if you look at adding these positions, for example, over a two-year period, the ability to assess that position's impact on the student's test scores, if that's what you're looking at, and all the other E D A factors that would be involved if you were looking at that student's day over 24 hours, especially over two years of adding a position, it would be hard to, I think statistically, say, we added this position, that was responsible for this student's 13% growth in reading and 18%. I think we could, if we're doing the work in the right way, and we're in the classroom and working with these people, and we're really dialed into the assessments that are happening, we can take things away from that to then decide again in two years, are these positions that we added having an impact both on a quantitative standpoint, and again, we're going to surmise, right, we're going to, we're going to have to, there's a qualitative aspect of it as well. And which is why, you know, Nicole shared that information first today, to create a bit of a backdrop for our thinking around how we're investing these funds and where they need to go. There is other work, as we look at these positions, we still have to determine in terms of our team structure at each school, and what the counseling support looks like. If you look at our models across our elementary schools, for example, they're not all the same in terms of one school has a clinician, one school doesn't, one school has a social worker, one school doesn't. They aren't all the same, and I don't think we're going to have one kind of like staffing model that's exactly the same at every school, because the needs are different. There's historical context too, but we do want to make sure that we're funding with equity and we're putting positions in places that, that schools really need them, and they're making an impact. And that, that's a hard thing for our community sometimes, when that school doesn't get it. This school does, because there's more need at this school.
Well, and that is the equity. You know, you're giving them a higher ladder, basically, to, you know, pick the apple or whatever that crap. All right, last question, and then we're done.
It's not so much a question, but it may be more difficult to say, in a period of two years, X percentage of the goal has been achieved, but if that goal has been broken down into plenty of objectives, you could certainly have counted to six or seven perhaps. Oh, yeah, this student has met the objective, we're 30% of the way there.
I just wanted to ask a question of the public process. You're not having public meetings about this, it's just online and people will fill in their feedback? They don't have any public meetings at any of those schools?
Is that something we want?
Thank you, Caitlin and Nicole, it is always such a pleasure to hear from both of you to feel those lips into the, so thanks for being here, when you have a deadline hanging over your head. All right, on to the report of the board. You all received your committee assignments, as I stated in my email to you all.
Before you get into that, we do have, just in the agenda, the little thing about the news, the board, oh, daily newsletter, right, getting into that.
We do.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you didn't skip one.
Oh, I see it.
Okay.
Anyway, so committee assignments have gone out. It was sort of a brain game of making sure that we had a mix of old and new, and small town and middlebury, and what people were interested in. So sort of the next thing is maybe, once this meeting is adjourned, if you get together, if you move and find, decide when you're going to have your first meeting, and that is when you will. And that is when you will elect a chair. In addition, there's a doodle poll that either went out this afternoon or will go out tomorrow to get some other district dates for our retreat and board chair. Next, please, Mary Heather maybe wants to touch a little bit on the draft school board meetings.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure, and this doesn't need to take up a lot of time, I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to put their eyes on the draft board update that we want to put out. The Communications and Engagement Committee has recommended, frankly, here to a quarterly schedule, just regular proactive communications to, you know, keep folks surprised as to what committees are working on, when meetings, important dates, things are coming up. So we have slated the board update to go out the end of March, beginning of April, just to kind of stay on a quarterly schedule. Our last one went out at the end of the year in December. This one, as you can see, just welcomes new board members, gives, sorry, expresses gratitude for our outgoing board members and our, probably for near the Cali, Nurse Kelly at the high school, and then gives just kind of forward-looking highlights from committee work. So this is the draft that our committee has put together. Just wanted to make sure you all are able to put your eyes on it. Any concerns or questions, please email me. But that's pretty much it. And then we would hope to get this out.
When would you like feedback back?
I would say probably the end of the week or Monday would be great so that I can try to get this out early, early April.
And that actually true, there have been some questions because we, as a board, have received public comment that's gone to the whole board. And so I know there's questions, especially from the new members, is how, what the procedure is for responding to public comment. As you've seen in the recent ones, I've responded and then let you all know, just so that, I know that feeling of like, is someone going to respond? I want to make sure that this person knows that their email has landed safely. So we actually, the Communications Committee last year, Mary Heather, do you want to talk about like the sort of the policy procedure?
Yeah, so we have kind of drafted just a procedure for responding, having the board respond to incoming emails like that. And in general, either the board chair or designee of the board chair, I did it a couple of times last year, just would respond with just kind of a form, thank you for your comments, it landed safely, and we'll be discussing it or making sure that if it pertained to a particular issue, that it went to the correct committee chair, or if it needed to go to the superintendent, for example. Basically, the policy is to make sure that you follow the chain of command if it needs to go to central office administrators, and then direct it to the appropriate committee chair. And then what I tried to do is copy everyone's, that everyone on the board knows that the email has been responded to. That's, that's the process that we've put out in general.
And I think in general, if you then, if you get an email to you as an individual, as a board member, you're welcome to respond, you just need to make sure that it's clear that you're not speaking on behalf of the board, that you're speaking for yourself.
I just asked one question on that as far as communication, because there was a question on the website relative to whether our private phone numbers would be on there. I don't know if we've made a decision on that.
Yeah, we have. That actually has been proposed. So board member private phone numbers are not on the website. Our ACSD emails are. And we do have posted a board, a dedicated board voicemail number that folks can call me the voicemail, the Communications and Engagement Committee said, that usually and our, the outgoing message said that. So when folks call, they know.
That, my question was, if someone has a question of one board member, in a way that they just come up with, they're on to the email, there's a way that they can address that through that voicemail, that you, if you pick it up, then you say, this person was calling you particularly? Because, I mean, everybody knew my phone number 15 years ago, okay? So that they always could call, or they anybody did, but I never felt burdened by having my phone number. And honestly, I was sort of not, I guess, in that, saying that they should be there or not. But I don't want to be protected from the public by having that type of thing. I just find that that's, it never was, it was never a huge burden. And, you know, I think, I don't know, as long as that voicemail thing can work, I just feel that when we're sort of, you know, we don't have phone books anymore, and many of us use our cell phones. So, I mean, me to figure out how to even call some of you guys, I don't have that information necessarily. And I just want to make sure that we're doing it right and not being so protective or isolated. Maybe others don't feel that way, but that's what I.
No, I mean, I've never minded my phone number out there.
Yeah, I get 10 calls a day telling me my student debt, which never happened.
Like, it's in this day and age, I mean, people want to track you down, they can track you down. And there are still phone books out there, some of us are.
I'm not saying that they're boring, I'm just, it's hard. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not making too many of them.
Also, before we move on to the policy committee update, another communications issue or thing to remember is that when you are communicating board member to board member, or to superintendent or whatever, you should use your ACSD email. Because if there's a public record request or what have you, it's just much easier to have that filtered rather than have to go into your private email. So that really, like, remember to do that. I think it's actually recommended by the SBA that any board work you got through your board email address, you know, you got through home. All right, I'm going to hand it over to Mary for policy vision discussion.
So we have banked a bunch of policies that we've been looking at. This year, we noticed that, well, actually, for probably the last year and a half, we've noticed that many of the policies that we, were originated when ACSD came together as a board, were adopted in 2016, and 2017, and 2018. And ideally, we should go through our policies and review them and update them every three years. So we're in the process of doing that now. So you've got a whole bunch right now, and these are the ones we've been working on for the last couple of months. So I'm going to go through them and let you know where the changes are, because most of them are very similar to the original policy. The first policy groups are the A group, and those are our board policies, our board, how we operate as a board. VSB, or VSB, Vermont State School Board only has one policy for board operation, and it's conflict of interest. So when our board first came together in 2016, we had, I think we maybe, I'm not sure how many, but there's like eight different policies for the, for the ACSD board. So we've gone through the first two for this review. And then we picked off a bunch of the policies that are required in the B category, which is employees. So that's why there's a couple of in the B category. And then we have a couple in the D category, which is for students. So I'm going to start with A, and I'm going to ask Suzanne, can you take notes as people make comments on if they, if they want to add anything that is potentially conducive? So the first one is A1, which is government, or governance, governance commitment. And it's basically sort of saying why this school board, this is sort of our vision and our mission of what we're doing at the school board. When you read through this, most of this is the same policy that was adopted in 2016. The only thing that we have added or changed is we added a piece about, we feel that we need an annual review of this policy so that we can sort of decide, did we, did we meet the commitment that we made in this policy? Review what we've done, you know, have we done a good job? Have we executed all the pieces in this policy? So that's the first one. But in maybe in that recommendation, we feel like there needs to be some kind of a process or procedure that outlines how we will do that. So whether it's done in a board retreat, or we do a survey, or we have, you know, some kind of a possibility of doing feedback. So that's, that's a recommendation we're doing for this one, that we need a procedure or policy to do an annual review. The second piece that we talked about was strategic plan. The first five years that we've been together since 2016, the strategic plan has been what we've worked on for the last couple of years. And now that we're moving into a different strategic plan, which is equity, we know that at the end of this year, we're probably going to have to make some adjustments to this policy again to represent that. Okay? And one of the pieces on the strategic plan was that we communicate with our constituents and, you know, have a good line of communication. And Mary Heather's group, who's been doing the planning and engagement, came up with this draft back in November. And Mary Heather just talked about some of the things that she's already done to do some of that communication. And we think that a procedure or process, like you have sort of outlined here, kind of meets, meets that recommendation. So again, that's another piece that we feel we need to work on to actually complete this policy. But the actual written policy, we feel like the draft that you got, that you received, basically states this, and it's just making sure that we have a procedure in place for our review, our annual review, and then communication. So I'd like you to take a look at this over the, you know, and if any feedback you want to send to us, we really appreciate it. If anybody has any comments of anything that breaks so far. Yes?
Yes, great. Just, and this is just to make sure we don't lose it.
Yep.
There were hyper text links in the original policy document that aren't defined in the new one. Like, the only way to get the, to the ACSD charter is through this link that was on there. And it's just making sure that those links are added back in.
Right.
Right? Because I, in the past, tried to find the charter, and I was able to get to it from this document, but it's not something you can find on our website.
Right.
So it's important. And it also then had a link to the ACSD strategic plan.
Right.
Okay? Oh, does that work? I accessed it, oh, did it chart it? It worked the other day when I tried it. Yeah, weird.
That is something we, when we were looking at all our policies, we wanted that hyper text.
And maybe that charter document, we need to find a real home for it, so it's hanging off somewhere, because it's kind of an important document, I think. The other thing I noticed, you know, what I ended up doing, because I compared to the old and the new electronically. So we took out, and I know the name of the committee is now, right?
Right.
But it was in a way of, you know, it is basically talking about reaching out to the community in a variety of ways to make sure that we're really getting representative input. That was taken out of the current policy. And I know in the past, I had talked about kind of like community engagement and vision, there's A23, and a lot of it is in here.
Right.
Right? And I think if you look at A23, there's maybe more of it that could just be put in this policy.
Provide the truth?
Yeah, because you already have a couple of the paragraphs already. Like, the last paragraph is directly from A23. In your policy, A1, it's directly there.
Right.
And if you look at the rest of the text that's in A23, I think it does it a little, maybe a little more clearly, that community engagement piece of it. It's just a, you know, a thought, it's something to think about.
Okay. Where, A23, are you finding that on the ACSD?
Yeah, yeah. You know what, I can just give you this.
Yeah, I have a first.
Yeah. And you'll see, I have little marks where it says, okay, this one is already there.
No, that's great. I appreciate your note.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So ideally, we'll vote on these at some later date. Okay, so the second policy is A2, key responsibilities for board members. We basically kept the same policy that's here, but we added, and it's, I have to say, it's like the end of the first page. In order to compare new board members to the roles and responsibilities of the board, the board chair and superintendent will develop a board orientation, that was, procedure, along with meeting with new members, orientating them to the district policies, et cetera, that whole paragraph. That's, that's all new. It's basically to make sure that we provide an orientation program to all new board members. And then we changed the name of the Communication and Engagement Committee. And on the very bottom, I can't see this since it's small, letters, the board should determine a process for reviewing and monitoring those roles and responsibilities. Again, it's a way of us to evaluate how we're doing, we need to change anything, so another way for us to just evaluate ourselves as a, as a board, so.
So I have just a couple of little.
Yep.
Yeah, in that news section where it starts, in addition, new board members are encouraged to attend a Vermont State School Board Association seminar.
Great.
Isn't that Vermont School Board Association seminar? You're talking about.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would get rid of state and, you know, do Vermont School Board Association.
Right.
And, and it makes it a little more clear where it is.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing I noticed was that this policy now is identifying that the executive committee would do the, would nominate and or assign numbers to the standing committee. So that's kind of a change. That's right above.
Oh.
Where members serve on committees.
Right.
Yeah, and then this identifies that now going forward, that it would be the role of the executive committee as opposed to just the board chair.
Can I make a suggestion? I guess I feel like, just in the interest of time and efficiency, if we can go through some of these, if there's a way for, for the policy committee to receive fine tuning comments.
That would be great.
Actually, that's all I have. The other ones were pretty, they were.
They're boilerplate.
Yeah, the other ones.
These are the ones that.
Yeah, the other ones, they were like, making them look like Vermont School Board Association, so.
I appreciate that. But yeah, we're in this thing.
So if you have sort of the, you know, word choice or whatever comments, you email them to.
I could put them on Google Doc with the opportunity to send feedback. Or is that a better? Oh, do that, okay.
No.
It's all that stuff. Okay, forget that, that's why I have trouble.
Okay, so if you're done with that one?
So that goes to it. Now we're going to go to the rest of them, which are, like Peter said, the boilerplate.
Yep.
So B1, substitute teachers, B2, volunteer work studies. These are right off VSB's website, model, policy website. And we took them as they did it because they're state statute. The only thing that's added on B1 is the legal citations. The only thing that's added on B1 is the legal citations, so we just added those. And we do have the process from the, from DLH, who we just deployed, you know, the, she makes sure when she hires that she's following this process. We have the same with the volunteers and work studies, too. Only added the legal reference, because then we're, well, hyperlinked to the process of things. Then we have B3, which is alcohol and drug free workplace. Again, this is a required policy from VSA, we didn't change anything. This is their updated version from 3, 2020. Drug and alcohol testing, transportation, again, this is VSA model.
Can you make input, if it's time that we see something in one of these policies?
Yeah, please send that to me, yeah.
Oh, send it to you?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, tobacco prohibition, these are all according policies, again, this is a required policy, updated in 2019 from VSA. They added again the legal citations. Okay, and the last one is B3, which is disposable computer, internet, and network use. Again, this is a required policy from VSA, this is their boilerplate. I asked Will to look at it, and he said, yep, this looks pretty good, and so we're recommending, this was updated in 2019 by VSA. So we just want to make sure that we're up to date on our policies and that we have them on the books. Yeah. Yep. Yep.
So, did you tailor anything at all that's applied with ACSD's policy? I'm looking specifically at the substitute teacher one, right? I know we do a background check, for example.
Yes, yes.
But it's not listed on here. Is that just something that's like a procedure within our district, and so we don't necessarily need to have it as a policy? Because this is just a policy from the state? I'm just trying to figure out, like, what level we're supposed to be looking at?
It's basically the same policy that I'm looking for right now.
Right?
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering what we, what we need to have, right? So do we need to include something like, we do a background check, pending a background check of all? Like, you say they have a bachelor's degree, but you don't say that they can't be, you know, convicted of crime.
Right.
For example.
Any person who's hired has to go through that, a background check.
Part of the procedure.
In part of the procedure.
Well, that's a good question. Because where does, where does policy and then procedure begin?
Right, right.
As school visitors, we actually do have that in there.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, what we're supposed to be looking at here, and what we should keep an eye out for, right? Like, if this is just what the state says, and we're fine with that, and the school district has our own procedures, is that covered someplace else, or should we be looking for things like that? I guess that's my question.
I'd recommend that we don't add to the required policies.
Okay.
Because we start to pick and choose, and then the next time, things get lost, it's much better for us to have those things ACSD specific.
Right.
And keep, keep these as they are. Historically, we have sometimes gone into required policies and altered and changed things because we felt really strongly about something. It then requires the next four, in three years, and five years to remember that.
Okay.
And things have gotten lost in translation, year to year, so I feel more comfortable when we follow the VSA required policies. And they look through this to make sure that everything that needs to be in here, and again, a lot of these arise out of statutory changes that require districts to do certain things. That's what promulgates the origination of a lot of these policies. Like, you know, over the last couple of years, we've added special ed, special ed policy, a number of other things that weren't, which we didn't have before, because of.
Okay.
So Jen, I'm looking at page two of the substitute teachers, and it's the legal citations there that actually state the criminal background checks, prevention identification of reporting of.
So you're saying it's referring to other, it's referring to other policies?
It's referring, yeah, it's the law.
The law. The statute.
The statute.
See, you know, so these required and recommended policies from the VSA.
Yes.
Are of, just clarifying here, because I think.
What are we trying to do?
The VSA, their job, or what we pay them to do, is to monitor legislation.
Right.
And they say, this legislation is going to require policy changes. We rely on them to do that work for us. We change those required policies at our peril, because the VSA has, you know, they've got the lawyers hired to try and do this stuff, and they're doing that work for us. So I think, you know, that's, it's important that we, that we look at the policies, but that we understand that if we're going to change them, we may be investing what I think we don't understand.
Yeah.
The VSA is looking at the statutory ramifications of putting policies out.
Thank you. That's very clear.
So the process.
Just one other thing to add, that I'm connected to through my VSA president who rolled out, is VSA and VSA are working together, and we've got an equity grant from the state, and one thing that is happening right now is to review all of the policies, all of the required and recommended policies on VSA with an equity lens. So I would expect that we're going to see a significant trove of new required policies coming, that just the language might look a little different, it's still going to apply to the same statute that each one applies to, but they're, they're looking at it just through, through that kind of equity lens. So we expect that probably in the next, I don't know, three or four months.
And we have to do it again. So they brought some back from policies, too, so. Was that some policies that we were looking at, they pulled them back already?
Right, they did, yeah. So, yeah, I, you know, I put on the notes for myself, which I'll give you sharing, I put the date that the VSA reviewed it, so that we know it's within, many of them have been done between 2019 and now, so. But it sounds like there'll be even more changes, yeah. Yeah.
So we're going to continually have these over the next several months in big chunks to review, and as, as Mary stated, a lot of them are just coming from us, from the VSA. And so what's the process? We review them tonight, and then they'll be born for the next meeting, and we'll take action on them.
But do send me your feedback, so I can explain if anything needs to be.
When you want that by? Sorry. When you want that by? We need it.
It depends on when we're, we have to more than 10 days ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would say within a week.
It's not a lot of time if it's going to be for the next four.
Yeah, so. We may do it, though, later on.
That's our first mark.
Well, Mary, we were meeting in April.
I know.
Meeting tomorrow.
So now that we have new people on our committee, we may have to change our dates, our meeting dates. I have a meeting Wednesday, but we can talk about that.
One point I forgot, in all of these things, there's this constant review, they're definitely good every year.
Right.
As long as I've been on the boards, we never kept up with that, because it is onerous, honestly. There's so many other things that one has to, that has to happen. So, you know, I want to make sure that we don't put on all these things, because it's just the right thing to do, knowing, oh, well, we'll never be able to do, do it completely. It's better not to have the rule if you're not going to follow it.
Well, is that my rule? I don't know where the.
No, I know that, but all of these say, review by, whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know whether, you know, the Policy Committee has a book, which, you know, every month flashes what's going to happen.
No.
No, of course not, but, but yeah, that is, but I just, you know, it's very easy to say, yeah, we'll do this in a year. Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
It never happens.
Yeah. So we picked the first one, our governance, as a place to review.
I'm making a general comment. So if we go through the process, hopefully order.
They don't have that. So that was actually.
All right, moving on from policy, is there any other?
See, I spent the entire day in the middle school today, and there was a parent group that provided breakfast, I believe Jen was part of that. It was spectacular. I know that the staff that I spoke to, who spent a lot of time in that group, were all highly appreciative of that, and were, and felt very much, there was so much food there, that I saw it at 11 o'clock and said, this is what's left at 11 o'clock? After teachers had already had breakfast off of it. So it was really impressive, and it was really impactful. So I'd like to recognize that group for the contribution that they've made to make those middle school teachers feel appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you.
And well, I'm actually sure we did something for, I attended the Middlebury Community TV, and I learned an interesting piece of data. Of all the Youtubes that they produce, right, the most views, 30% of the total views are around our meetings for ACSD, so people.
Live work after.
After the fact, right? It's going in and clicking and actually reviewing it, which I thought was impressive, so I thought I would share that, that, you know, the people may not be able to participate live, but the information being out there is effective.
Yeah, that's great. You told, I'm sure you started. All right, with that, any other questions? We're going to move into executive sessions and personnel.
So I'll move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matter.
Thank you very much. One second. Hold those in favor.
Let's raise my hand. It's a two-year habit, I'm asking, right?
I know, it's hard to do that. It's all a habit.
Because we had masks on, so you couldn't see if we said aye, and that was the whole reason. Then see, we'll get a new link for.